Hey, family. I'm sorry, I was one minute late. But I had a face-to-face reading that I was concluding and I finally finished it. But, um, and then I was trying to give me a little something to eat. So that's hence why I was running a little late. But I see y'all still ain't here anyway. So I'll give y'all a few more minutes. I'll give y'all a few more minutes. I might have to send the information again. Let me send it out again, family. Excuse me, family, I'm sorry. Okay, so I just did the notification again for everyone, Shadow Work Sessions, and I will begin in a few minutes. Because on Shadow Work Sessions today, family... What happened? I did not mean to do that. Um, hold on, family, I'm trying to get it where I can show... I don't know why it's making me do that. Hold on, family. It's not allowing me to... Okay, was it present? My computer, upload file. Hold on, family, I'm trying to get this document so I can share it with you guys. Okay, I think I got it, yeah. It says it's processing. Okay, there we go. Yeah, so this is what we're gonna talk about today, the circle of control. But I'mma remove it for right now and I'mma come back to it, okay? I love the desktop because then I'm able to do those type things with you guys, right? So, the main objective at hand, family, is today we're talking about, um, the circle of control, okay? So what is it that we need to know about the circle of control, family? Well, the circle of control is basically from the 1980s, right? Where this guy, his name is Stephen Covey, is what, um, and my sources is in reference of the, um, I forgot the name of the website I got it from. I think it was the Psychology Today or something of that sort. And then, of course, I always use Self-Love Rainbow. I love them, right? So I'm citing my sources. Hey, family, hey sis, hey, hey, hey. Um, today we're talking about the circle of control, okay? Let me put this in here so y'all will know, alright? Okay. Alright, so the circle of control, family, right? So that's what we're talking about. So as I was saying, I was citing my sources and letting you guys know my intentions today is talk about the circle of control and how we can utilize it and use it for our higher selves to gain knowledge about how to control certain aspects of our life, okay? Um, because some of us have control issues, okay? I'm one of them, okay? So when you feel out of control, you feel helpless. You feel like, you feel like you don't have control over your life. And some of you, some of you may feel like you don't have control over your money. You may not have control over your love life. You may not have control over your emotions, right? Right, I'm right there with you, sis, right in there. We in confessions together, okay? But, um, all of this, family, is why I brought it to Shadow Work Sessions today. So, um, and I sent plenty of notifications out too. I sent two, so hopefully you guys got y'all notifications. But normally they start scrolling in later on, right? So I'm gonna go ahead and start. So as I was saying, in 1980s, Stephen Covey created the concept of the circle of concern, okay? So the circle of concern is in the circle of influence. That's what he created, right? So, um, okay, good, you got it, okay. So see, I know I ain't tripping, because the other day, Pinterest didn't send nothing, because I sent it to everybody and I even checked my phone and I didn't get it. So I know they didn't send it, right? So yeah, thanks, sis, for confirming that for me. But anyways, so he created this circle of concern and circle of influence. Now, he, he was like a psycho- psychologist, right? So you know, most psychologists, they study the behavior, right? And the acts of behaving and, you know, how we deal with things and so forth. So, um, the circle of concern contains the things that we care about but can't control. And the circle of influence are the things we care about and can impact, okay? So further, to simplify it, he put together the circle of control. So that's what we're gonna look at. And I, I do have, um, I do have it, so I'mma put it up. Um, I'm on my desktop, family, now, so I can share things with y'all and we can talk about it and so forth, okay? Um, so the circle of concern, family, is the things we can control and things we can influence and things we cannot control, okay? So we're gonna look at it, and it says, everyone is different though, okay? What can and can't control isn't the same for everyone. It's not. Because like, I may be not good with controlling money and you may be good with controlling money. I might not be control- good about controlling my emotions and you may be good about controlling emotions, or vice versa, okay? So the point, the point is, yeah, it be moving me. I don't know if I like it or if I gotta just get used to it. Because sometimes I be over here and sometimes I be over there. And sometimes they put me in the middle. I don't know, okay? I'm just grateful. But the point of the circle of the control is to never shame you or say that you're not trying, doing, and being enough, but to redirect your energy, your time, and your focus and your resources to something that is in your control. Or just by practicing self-care, which is what we do, and being kind to yourself through a time where you have no control. So it's all about, this is a self-care act, okay? Because a lot of us, when we feel like we're out of control, we feel like we've lost ourselves, okay? So this is a part of us learning how to do that and deal with that, family. This is a neurodivisance, which plays a big part in the things we can and can't control. So this is about the nerves. Actually, being able to control things, that's why you get a little anxious and nervous when you can't control things. That goes back to your nervous system. And remember, we always talked about how body parts and things, even your thinking and your mental, goes back to some form of ailment in your body. Well, this concerns your nervous system when you think about what you can't control, okay? So not only are we talking about it here on Shadow Work Sessions because of things that are, you know, um, yeah, things that are, and I do too. I get nervous too and it makes me like, you know, my nerves bad, you know what I'm saying? And so with all that being said, then we know that we need to try to take some things and do some things that can help us control that urge or that anxiety and some, for some, even depression, right? Um, it can lead to that rhythm, okay? So this is definitely a point in our life as our, as our support system of us here in Shadow Work Sessions. Yes, it makes you feel chaotic and unbalanced, yes. Definitely, sis, me too, you know? Because I'm, I'm big about control, because I like to have things organized and I like to know things ahead of time. But that is my urgo mood. Um, so I already know, you know what I'm saying? Knowing your chart is knowing who thyself is, okay? So I know that's what it is for me. I have, I feel like I need to have control. When in actuality, we really don't control anything. The most high in the ancestors control it all, but we can try to maintain, is the way I'm gonna approach this for us, okay? So, because we looking at things spiritually, you know what I'm saying? Not just what is written, but we have to look at it spiritually. Yes, know thyself, yes, family. So, um, simplifying the circle of control, family. Okay, so I want to show y'all the circle of control, okay? So this is the circle of control, family, okay? So, um, let me put the glasses on, sexy. Okay? Alright, so the circle of control, simplifying this circle of control. This is basically what we would use. This is basically like an activity. And I'mma send this out to everybody and I'mma put it also in the link, um, so you can have it. Hey, T-Rose, thanks, sis. Yes, I love it, yeah, I do too, T-Rose. It's gonna help us, you know what I'm saying? And these are, um, these are worksheets that I'm going to put underneath of this Shadow Work Session so you can print them out where you are, or you can actually create this on a piece of paper for yourself, but this is what you're gonna do. We're gonna simplify the circle of control, family, okay? Now, by doing this, most of the models of the circle of control consist of three circles normally, okay? The things you can control, the things you can influence, and the things you cannot control, okay? Now, the spinner that is, we're gonna take it based off of the model with the psychologist that created this in reference of what we wanna look at as this model of the circle of control. And then we're gonna put a spin on it spiritually, okay? So the, um, the spiritual, the, the, I'm sorry, the circle of influence aspect, some may find helpful and some may find the circle of control is helpful. It just depends on how you utilize it, because everybody's story is different. Everybody's situation is different, okay? And everybody's gonna have different things in this bubbles, okay? Because what your stressors are, are not my stressors and vice versa. And some of us are gonna have some that are same, like this on here, okay, bills. Everybody in America probably gonna have bills, family. Right? So that's definitely gonna be on your circle of maybe not being able to control. Because we can't control not, you know, well, we can control it, but you know what I mean? It's just part of your stressors, right? Okay, so, um, how to use the circle of control? So we identify your worries, which is the stressors, okay? So the directions is on the sheets that I'm gonna send you guys and they look like this. But I wanted to talk about this more in detail in reference of the circle of, um, control. And the focus of the, um, the stressors are that you actually are, you know, stressed about. Right, exactly. T-Rose said bills, bills and more bills. Exactly, okay? So in your circle, okay, of stressors, your stresses are stressors. Y'all laughing, right? You put your bills in there, you put your errands, the challenges with your partner, maybe you have health. You know, these are just things that are gonna stress you. And you write this down because it's causing you stress or anxiety. And you follow the five steps, which is reflecting on what is in your control, what is not in your control, your plan and coping skills that can help you cope with this, okay? So in this first circle, which if you don't get them, even if you just watch the video and you don't print the, the sheets out or whatever, you could take a notepad and make a little bubble and follow just the path, because it's basically just you doing your shadow work. But just in a different aspect of you being able to see how, things you can't control, what you can't control, what influence you have over it, your stressors, and to create a plan, okay? So that's what I'm bringing to you guys today. Now, that was the first one. So here is what I was trying to get you guys to understand about. Excuse me, family. So this is, um... Can you hear me now? You couldn't hear me? Y'all couldn't hear me back there? Aw, man, let me see how I can blow it up. How do I switch? Hold on. How do I switch myself back? Yes, I can hear you now, but you couldn't hear me back there. Oh, how do I get, how do I switch myself? Oh, oh, wait, family, hold on. How do I do it where it's just by itself? The cinema layout, the picture-in-picture? Hold on, family, you know I'm trying to learn this. I want it to be where, okay, the solo. Solo layout, okay. But I want, I don't want it to be solo like that. I want it to be side-by-side. Maybe this. That's it. I'm learning. I'm learning. I'm learning. Woo! I got it, yay! Okay, family, so we working this thing out, family. We gonna work this thing out. We gonna get this thing, okay? So, we get back into teacher mode, okay? So, back to the circle of control, okay? So the circle of control, family. So basically what I was saying, family, is this is the circle, right? So you write out all your stressors. And I like to do this myself, but it helps me to look at things that I do feel like I need to work on or I don't have control over, or what's influencing me to feel like I don't have control over it. Whether it's childcare, might put money in here, hell, challenges with partners, challenges with family, children, friends, whatever you wanna put in this bubble to recognize. See, this is you recognizing and showing that, listen, I have these stress, stressors or what I'm worrying about, what I have anxiety about. And then from there, you're gonna transfer that to breaking it down per stressor, see? So per stressor. Let's just take one, for example, so we can work through one of our circles of control. As me and all of the, all y'all on here was talking about bills. So we gonna use bills, okay? So, we got our piece of paper, we made our little bubble, and we wrote down all of our things. We said, okay, now we gonna break down what we, what we wanna, how we wanna handle this, okay? So how we wanna handle this is we wanna name the current stressor. So that, so the stressor is gonna be up here, bills. I wish I could write it up here, bills, biggest day. Right? And then it says, list all that is in... Hey, 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 Eldra, I'm glad you made it, sis. Um, so in here, family, it says, list all that is in your control, things you can do about it. So right here, I would write a plan, a part of my plan on either how I'mma handle that bill. Let's say if you broke it out, let's just say it's the light bill, okay? And let's say that light bill is more than what you may can pay. In here, I would say, things in my control about that light bill. I would put not stress, first thing. Because you can't, I mean, there's no need of you stressing about the bill, okay? It's the bill, okay? So that would be the first thing I would put here to, to kinda give me the inkling of, I'm not gonna stress about this bill, you know what I'm saying? I'm gonna stay calm. I'm gonna have some things that I can do written down in this, in this box down here, which is the action. See, things in my control, not stress. You can control that. You can control being calm and meditate throughout the situation. So you can, you can attach yourself, I mean, you can attain not stressing. So I would put that first here, right? The second, I would put, the things in my control is, um... Think positively about the bill. I would write that in here. See, these are examples. You know, you may wanna write these down or come back and if you wanna do this in reference of a coping skill for the things of your control and how to help you, assist you on problems with control, family. That's what this is about, because a lot of us have problems with control. I know I do, okay? Now, those are just two examples in the things that I can control, okay? Now, the things that I cannot control, anger. Okay? I would put anger in here, okay? I would put anger, okay? I would put, because that's what you mad, you mad about that damn bill. Things out of your control is your anger, okay? But mainly over here, family, you could put under both of those things or you could put like a circle around and it say emotions, okay? But over here, you put anger, because you're out of control. That's something you seem like you can't control. Family, y'all know we got, we get our laugh on sometimes over here, but that's the truth. Be mad about that damn phone bill, okay? Because we gonna drop down in a few minutes and see how we can cope with that anger, honey, okay? Second thing is, the things we can't control is, we gotta have it. I would, I would put electricity, okay? I would put that in there. What I can't control, electricity, okay? Especially when the phone bill is A-T-T. Exactly, okay? That would be up here too, okay? Just put phone bill up there, okay? So, y'all so funny. But it's the truth, okay? And then, family, right, let the lights go out. Y'all so crazy. No, don't let the lights go out, family. You gotta put in here what you can't control. You got to have electricity unless your tail going off the grid, okay? And if that's the case, then put under here coping skills going off the grid or either action plan. What's your action? The go off the grid, because you sick and tired of paying the light bill. You see how that work out, family? That's your action, going off the grid, because I don't want no more electricity, okay? So I'mma live out in this, I'mma live out in this, uh, this little tiny house, okay? If that's your plan, that's your plan. Some people, that's their plan. I'mma get me a trailer and go back there and get me one of the things you plug up and plug in my electricity and therefore I ain't gonna have no light bill no more. And you write that in there, if that's what you wanna do. If that's for you, that's for you. You see what I'm saying? But me, I'mma write on up here anger, because that's something I can't control right now and I'mma be truthful about it, okay? Yeah, make it a homestead. Right, exactly, okay? Right! Not the candle, I came with you. But that is hilarious, but that's what I'm saying. Yeah, some of us had to go that route with the candles back in the day. We didn't have, we, that was out of our control, because we ain't had the money. And you know what that might be? You might gotta write that in there. What is it that you can't control having the money? Okay, make this work for you, family, because this is gonna show you the circle of control, okay? This gonna be showing you the circle of control. But what's gonna be your action? What's gonna be your coping skills to make that money, to get that money, to get the lights back on? That's the, that's the plan, see? This is coping skills, family, right? So the list is all that is out of your control. Create a plan for how to overcome your current stressors, family. Include a few coping skills that will help you navigate the stressor, okay? So that's the gist of this circle of control, family. So I hope that this, you, you understand. See, okay, here is a version of it completed, okay? So let's look at this too, alright? So, problem or stressor. My job is starting to notice my recent tardiness. But my mornings are tough with my teenager struggling to get out of bed and ready for school. You see? So this is this person's problem. This person's like, look, my stressor is getting to damn work. First of all, I don't wanna be there anyway and I got this damn teenager that won't get up and won't get in the school line and then I gotta wait in the school line. I'm just talking for this person. But this is mainly probably what it is, okay? Because I remember these days as well. Then nobody wanna get up, okay? So then this person is late, they done probably on the last morning. So this is a stressor, because this is dealing with your livelihood, right? So the things that they can control, in their control, my own night and morning routine. So yes, creating a routine. That means getting in the bed early so that person won't sleep over, putting a new alarm on or something like that. My child's bedtime routine, rules and consequences, yes. Put that child asleep and make sure that that child understands, look, this is what we got to do. See what I'm saying? Things in the control, who I share my situation with and who I ask for help. Hello, because you don't wanna tell everybody your business. You see what I'm saying? That's what you can't control, your mouth, the gossip. Because then Suzie Mae down the street will be talking about how you done lost your job because you can't get up in the morning. And then it be all around the church, folks. That's who this person sound like. He saying, who I share my situation with. I was like, oh, okay. So the action plan for this person is I would talk with my teenager about what it's going to be or what is going on. And create an earlier bedtime for my teenager. See, these go hand in hand, see? What, what you can control and the action you doing. Set an early alarm for myself and for my teenager, right? Establish a reward, now that's a good one. For the teen and myself for making it to school and work on time for a week straight. Yes, reward yourself. See? See, that's what we have to remember when we do wanna be in control of everything. We gotta set action and a plan behind what, what it is that we feel that we can't control and then reward ourself for those things. Because that way you'll be prompt on making sure you take care of whatever it is, the stressor that it is, you know? And how to resolve it, being a stressor and create it. See, it's just changing a negative to a positive, family. That's what this is. But being able to write it down and see what it is that you can do to change your stressors, okay? Now, the things he cannot control, let's see what he say here. Teenagers' attitude and behavior, sleep habits. That's true. Well, you can correct that by popping them up side... I'm sorry, y'all, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to say that. But I'm just saying, you know what I'm saying? Unexpected circumstances, work policies, yeah, you can't change that. Work demands and traffic, now that's true. Unexpected circumstances, that's tower moments happening. Might it be a wreck or something, that's traffic. Teenagers' attitude, you could control that. You could control that if you the right parent to know to put the foot down on the smackdown on it. You know what I'm saying? That's how I was. But of course, this ain't the 90s no more either. They'll take you to jail, you know, for trying to, to adult, right? But you can help in reference of sleep habits. These are things that can be changed. Now, see, he put that over here too, or she or whoever, right? And work demands and policies, now those are things you can't change, okay? But what you can do in reference of coping is journal about what I'm feeling. Now, that I agree with. You know, I love the journal, okay? So journal about what you're going through, how you feeling, you know what I'm saying? Talk to someone about what is going on, okay? But not that person that's gonna tell all your business over here as well, okay? So be mindful, okay? And engage in movement, okay? So basically, take a walk or exercise, okay? So these are just some coping methods, okay? So, all in all, family, this shows you the gist of breaking down the stressors on what you can control and what you can't control. See? So my intentions was for you to be able to take this, right? Which I'm gonna give you all this underneath the video for this, uh, Shadow Work Sessions. And you could print it out or you could copy it, you know? Just write it down yourself or whatever you wanna do it, or just, you know, download it to your computers or whatever so you can use this method. This is a template, right? For you to be able to help yourself in reference of what you can control and what you can't control. Because sometimes it's easier said than done when versus you take something and you're able to actually physically write it down. It's kinda like writing out what you need from the store, right? So this is kinda showing you what it is that you can control or what you can't control. So this is kind of showing you what it is that you can control or what you can't control. Sometimes this helps also in reference of our cycle, right? So you understand that it's not always just about what you, you know, what you can't do, family, and being hard on yourself about the stuff that you can't control, okay? So I want you to understand that, all right? Now, excuse me, family. The last thing I wanted to tell you about the circle of control, family, is that it's about, uh, acknowledging, you know, what it is that you feel that you're out of control of too. Because for some of us, we may think it, but we don't, some things don't register until you see it. You see what I'm saying? You see how I just put the bill on here? You may have that situation, but you may not know how you gonna move forward. And this is a template to help you do that, to help you think through it, okay? Excuse me, family, I just ate. And I rushed, because I, um, I, my last face-to-face client was at from five to six, so I'm just getting here, family, I'm sorry. But, um, yes, so this is definitely a template to help us, family. How do y'all feel about this, uh, this circle of control, family? How do you feel about this right here? Do you feel that it is something that can help you, or that you feel that, you know, you can actually sit down and write it out? Even if you don't print the papers out, but now it's a way for you to kind of say, okay, I remembered the circle of control. Why do I feel like I'm out of control of this situation? Let's say it's a relationship. The circle of control, I put up here my love relationship. What are the things that you can control and what is the things you can't control about that relationship? You know what I'm saying? And how do you feel that, like even the meal planning, right? The meal planning you could put out here. You could put, uh, there's the family relationships, childcare, right? Maybe over here, if you put childcare up here as your stressors, what's the things you can control? Well, I can control that, I know that I have my aunt that I might can refer to helping me, so maybe I can control asking, you know, family members, put that in there. Asking family members, and then, um, put down here, you know, ask that specific aunt or something, or ask grandma, or I can take control over my time management, you know what I'm saying? And then how is that? Well, I can get off of work early. That's the action, you know what I'm saying, of childcare. Or what I'm out of control of is, maybe I don't have the money for the childcare, and what, how, you know, what are you gonna be, what are you gonna do? What is your actions? What are your coping skills to these things? So it's just for you to be able to plug in the things that you need to grasp control over. Because see, one thing about us with the shadow is us being able to embrace it, because sometimes our egos are too high and too big where we feel like we can control everything, and you can't. There's no such thing as being able to cr- control everything, family. You can't. You'll get burnt out for the first thing. The second thing that's gonna tax, tax your mental, okay? And the third thing is, you're not, you need to understand spiritually, you're not in control of anything. You have to leave a lot of this right here to the most high in the air system, see? To help you push through, you know? To help you talk to that teenager and tell them what's going on. Before this person does that, what should they do? Meditate and ask the ancestors to help, help guide me to speak to my child and help my child to be able to receive it, you see? So spiritually, we have to, um, spin this for us, right? On, on top of that, the journaling, this is definitely a part of shadow work, right? So journaling about how you feel, yes, because a lot of us have, uh, anxiety, a lot of us have depression, mental situations, because of what we can't take, we can't control, right? So some of us have, uh, you know, anxiety about what we can't control, when in actuality, if you sit down and you wrote this out, maybe it will help you, you know, to be able to feel like you have some form of control when you're able to write your pro. This is basically the pros and the cons, right? So maybe this can assist you, you know? And I'm gonna put this up, so you'll be able to see the examples, because hopefully this can toggle your mind if you don't know where to start. This can help you, because it is examples, okay? So I feel this is very, this been helpful for me, okay? So I know, um, yeah, it's a good idea to compartmentalize, yes, thing, uh-huh. That's right, Tenshu, that's right. And to let go of always feeling like you can handle everything, family, because sometimes you need help, okay? Sometimes you need help. You can't control everything, okay? And sometimes it just takes us being able, this is, these coping skills are tools you can use to help you feel less stuck in intense emotions, including journaling, movement, such as walking, biking, and connecting with others and more. So you definitely want to start utilizing your tools, family. Start utilizing your tools, okay? These are things that are tools for us to use to break down the things that we feel we may have already have control over, all right? So yeah, so this is, this is what that is, family, all right? Don't hold back and get it all out when you write your stressors too, and then break them down. How can you, how can you tackle each one of your stressors? That's what this is, okay? Even the challenges with the partner. So this is basically holding you accountable of doing your shadow work in reference of control, okay? That's all this is. All right, so I'm back. And, um, it's like the dang on TV keep getting louder and louder over there. I know it ain't having that loud in the, from the beginning. I looked up, I mean, I have on my jazz playing during the day, you know? Even while I was doing my little, um, readings and so forth, but it seemed like it just kept getting louder and louder over there. But anyways, family, so that's, uh, that just hurt it. I was like, what the hell? I be looking over there. So, family, that's what I had in reference of today's shadow work sessions was about the circle of control, okay? So I'mma print the, I'mma, I'm sorry, I'mma put the link underneath this, uh, shadow work session, so y'all can get those examples that I sent, that I put up there. And if you don't have a printer and print them out or anything like that, because you only need one copy, you know, because you can copy it down. Or you can take the actual, you know how to do it, and put it on your own notepad and just write down the circles, or you ain't even gotta write it down, you can do this, you know, just using it as a template, all right? So, um, how do you guys feel about that? How y'all feeling out there? That was, that was what I had in reference of shadow work sessions today. It wasn't gonna be that long, but I had to, I gotta turn this down, family, because this is gonna got too loud, family. I don't know what the hell going went down over here. Hold on, family. I'm like, where's the word? And yet with jazz in the world. That is hilarious. Okay, family, I'm sorry. Okay, so yes, family, so, um, so, okay. Good information, yes, right? Okay, I'm glad y'all, y'all, y'all like that. It did get louder, didn't it get louder? I know I wasn't tripping, yes, needed it, okay, good, I'm glad. See, that's what I be trying to, listen, I just be trying to bring us some tools, honey, okay? That's it, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, it did get louder, sis. But yeah, so, family, that's, um, that's all I really had, um, in reference of shadow work sessions today. I will pull us some cards if y'all want me to, right on time. I had to, um, I had a person try me today, I did, good I didn't go off. You go, girl, control your emotions, because it's hard, okay? It's hard. I already know. Ancestors turning the volume. Must have, was, I was like, the hell? That got loud. I was like, what? Because I, I don't know. Yes, must be they jam, honey, because they was in there turning it up. And family, y'all seen me in here talking to y'all about the dang on, uh, the thing, and the TV just was going up by itself, like, I'm sitting here like, why is the TV getting louder and louder? I had to start, it seemed like I was screaming. I was like, what the hell? Yeah, family, crazy. I'm glad y'all be seeing all this supernatural activity that be going on in my home, okay? I know I got the spirits running around in here, but Lord, I've been struggling with controlling my emotions, but I'm confident I get that a right print. Look at that, that, what I showed you with the circle of control, controlling the emotions. You know what? You put that back up there, see? You put that back up there, and, um, I'm sorry, like this, um, let me go ahead. This is what you need to be working on, but you put emotions here, see? Controlling emotions, that's your problem or your stressor, you see, Ebony? And then in this circle, now mind you, like I said, you don't have to print this out, but you can use this as like a template. See what I'm saying? So write down in your notepad, or at night when you got some downtime, right? You write down, the top thing would be controlling my emotions, right? And then under that, the things you can, you have in your control, and the things you feel like you can't control about you not being able to control your emotions. Do you feel like you can't control your emotions because you're angry? Or because of your, how you feel, you know what I'm saying? And what coping skills can you use? See, this is the thinking. This is, this is for you to be able to be intentional and think through these things, see? Because ancestors said, do this right here, so you can get to the action, you see? And the co- and the things that you not feel like you're not in control of, you can add the coping skills. See what I'm saying? Because see, sometimes, I'm like that. I'm a visual learner, and I'm also a person that has to have like a, I like to have a template, so I can know how to organize something, my thoughts as well. So see, with these type things, they help me, because I'm like, okay, now I know how to like section it off and how to break it down for me to comprehend, you know what I'm saying? And when I can comprehend something, I can work with it myself, you see what I'm saying? So I hope that's, that, that can help you sit in reference of your, um, your struggles with controlling your emotions, because I, 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 I resonate with that too, you know what I'm saying? I resonate with that too. So don't feel alone on that, as I always tell you, right? Once I know you're trying to ignore me, it will never work. You'll be pulling your hair out, messing with me, oh my God. Did they go fire? Okay, what we gonna do with that fire? Okay, you will, Ebony, yes, you will, you will get to. Okay, I will, I'mma write it down tonight, yes, write it down tonight. Because you don't have to print this out, family. If you don't have a printer or whatever, that's fine, you know? You don't have to do that. You could just use it as a template, put it in your journal, okay? Or notepad or somewhere. The only way I know to cope is to cry, and I hate to say that. Yes, but see, that's another form of you not being able to control it. So write that in here. And then find and look up, see? Because sometimes, family, you gotta do your own research in reference of knowing thyself and healing thyself, right? And look at what some coping skills are in reference of just having to cry out all the time in reference of not being able to control your emotions. There's plenty of things out there. Psychology today, um, Mind Green was one of my favorite ones. A lot of the psychology, um, shadow work videos, family, okay? Will help you. Nothing wrong with it. Nope, it's nothing wrong with that. That's an emotional release, it surely is, yeah. That's right. That's she, she not lying. For me, it's cry, go to jail. Right, right. For some of us, it's like that, family, but we can't go to jail. So we gotta write out what it is that's making us feel like this, okay? So release it, yes, cry, but also release it on paper, so it can help you to take those emotions and put them out on paper. So sometimes when you visually look at that, it can help you not have to, you know, go through the same thing again. Or if you do go through the same thing again, you can record it as well. You know what I'm saying? So just use this as a tool, okay? And reflection, okay? That Tenshu is crazy, so, or jail. Don't go to jail, family, don't go to jail, okay? Write this stuff down, okay? Yes, crying is a result of frustration, it sure is. Frustration, um, anger. Because I know sometimes I get angry, I'll cry, you know what I'm saying? Um, hurt, heartbreak, all just things that make you cry. Right, 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 exactly, sis. Exactly. T-Rose, I'll be Tenshu's dial after, yes, okay? So y'all better keep them tears rolling then, and you better keep these tools rolling too, and stay out of jail, because I don't look good in stripes, and neither do y'all, okay? So therefore, we must use our tools, okay? That the ancestors is giving to us through shadow work sessions. Let's pull a few cards, family, and let's wrap it up with that, okay? Because I'm definitely, honey, I'm, let me say something. I did so many readings today, family, I am exhausted, okay? My energy is spilt, okay? But I knew I needed to do shadow work sessions today. It's okay to cry, but after the crying, go over this to figure it out. That's, that's what I'm saying, that boom. My girl, she put it right there. Go on and get it out, cry, do what you gotta do, because that's, that's a release, like she said, that is, because I mean, I feel you. But this will help you figure it out for later, like she said, right there, okay? So for those that come in and watch this later, this also can help you, but this is also something that can help you after you've probably went through whatever. Because one thing about crying too, it's a part of grief as well, of whatever has ended, whatever you parted from, okay? Um, you know, heartbreak, pain, whatever it may be, all right? So, um, let me see, I do got Tenshu's cards in here. I'll pull up some spiritual guidance in a, a shadow work, uh, shadow work deck card, okay? The crown of the universe within, so let's start with T, um, Tenshu's deck. And then I'mma pull us one from, uh, crown of the universe within, okay? Yes, family, I am, oh, let me take this off, family. My fault, I did not mean to leave that on there, okay? And that's where I'm at now, Tenshu, it's good, I'm glad you working through it, yeah? Sometimes crying is the method of releasing and letting go, Asha, guess what it says? Yes, yes, it is. It sure is. And sometimes that's a clean way to relieve some anger too. You know what I'm saying? Especially if it's out of your, if you feel like it's out of your control. Write it down. Write it down, family, okay? That's how I'm looking at it, T-Rose, just a part of the healing, that's it, just a part of the healing process, that's all it is. And that's why these tools and stuff help us with that part, part of the process as well, because that's nothing but another form of us just journaling the things and how to control it, right? Because in our journals, when we doing our shadow work and stuff like that, we doing that anyway, when you writing about how you feel. But this just helps you to, like, um, Tenshu said, compartmentalize it, like to organize your, your feelings and where you are right now with that, you know what I'm saying? So that's, that's a good part about it. I'm just glad that this helps you guys, and, um, and I, and I'm, you know, I'm praying for all of us in reference of gaining control over some things in the future, right? Give us a few cards in reference of our spiritual guidance towards the circle of control that we have tonight. Ancestors, give us some clarity and some spiritual guidance for us here on Patreon. And those that see this video, um, in reference of the circle of control, what's the guidance for us here on Patreon in reference of the circle of control? First card that flew out, the universe requires your effort as well. So the ancestors is telling us that this is a part of your effort. You have to show effort in reference of doing things, of using your tools for the ancestors in the universe to understand that it's about you to utilize these things to make things better for you in the future. See, it's about your intentions. See, when you're doing the circle of control, that's an intent, that you're being intentional with, with wanting to learn how to control your emotions, or learning how to control your bills or whatever. And so the universe requires your effort as well. You have to put effort behind it. You can't just sit and think that you could just complain about something and talk about something, family, and not put any type of intentions behind it, and it's gonna change. That is insanity. Doing the same thing over and over and wanting new results is insanity, family. By definition, you can look it up. So you have to put intentions as the ancestors is saying, here go that damn camera. Like, as the ancestors is saying, family, okay? The universe requires- The universe requires your efforts as well. We have to constantly put effort into our change, to our healing. You see how the universe is, and the ancestors is telling us that? This is a part of that. Let me see what flew out. After the pain, it's time to look forward. Can't make this up, family. I love these cards. After the pain, this is, sound like this for you, Ebony, it's time to look forward. After you go through all those control methods and tools, and you really cry it out, it's time for you to look forward. One more ancestor, oh, one more ancestor in reference of, um, the circle of control for us. Ancestries, ooh, so many. Ah, ancestors say, and be still, and meditate. See, that's that meditation, be still. Yeah, meditate and listen, just what I said, meditate and listen your inner voice. Ask for guidance from higher self and others. I love these, I love that. See? So, with that being said, that's our message. Let me pull the last outcome message from the shadow work sessions. I mean, from the, uh, crown, the, uh, universe within. This'll be our last one, and you can use this as a journal prompt while you're doing or utilizing the circle of control. What is it that you can give us, ancestors, as our outcome message for the circle of control? I love that ancestors told us, sometimes we just gotta be still. Because we just be doing too much sometimes, we be doing too much. What is our outcome message, ancestors, in reference of the circle of control? The things that we can't control, ancestors. Give us a, um, journal prompt in reference of the things that we can't control. Thank you, ancestors. Who is the tru, who is my truest authentic self? Boom. I love that too, because ancestors want us to tap in and understand that, who is your truest self, right? Um, oh god. Um, who is your truest authentic self, right? And this is take the wand into the shadows. So we know this is about us doing something, this is about us looking at our truest self. Our truest self is to know thyself, which is to know, we can't control everything, family. That's what the ancestors is telling us. So therefore, you must know yourself, your truest self. So the ancestors want you to think about that. Why do you have to control everything? What is it in you that's making you have to control everything? Is that a trust situation, a trust issue? Is it something that has tainted you from your past? See? Who is my truest authentic self? Take the wand and shadow, family, and really think that through, all right? So, family, that is shadow work sessions for this evening, all right? I hope you guys like this, I hope this gave you some insight in reference of control, control. This is what we're talking about, things to help us with control. Because I know I have a problem with wanting to control things, but I'm gonna be using that, um, that tool. You welcome, love, you welcome. You welcome, sis. Yes, so, we definitely have to tap in, we have to tap in, because, let me tell you something. When I feel like I'm out of control, family, I be lost in the sauce. I do not like that feeling. But that's because of stuff that I feel like I wasn't able to handle because I didn't have any control over. When in actuality, it would've got handled in the first place. Or I should've known to just go towards letting my ancestors and the most high take care of it. You know what I'm saying? So, these, these are the things, okay? Loved it, thank you, sis. I'm glad you did, you missed the beginning, yeah, I'm gonna go back and watch, okay, yeah. Because you know, like I said, these are still here, even the ones from before, they still on the channel, family. You can go back and re-watch them if you want to, you know? Um, because sometimes I do, you know what I'm saying? Um, just like Tenshu was asking me the other day, we was talking about the Feng Shui one. Um, and that was like in March. Amy, we've been doing this a long time, September will be a whole year over here. Yeah, we gonna have a, we gonna have a party, a, a cyber party, over here, for the one year, it's in September. So I'll post that and let y'all know. I haven't decided what we're gonna do. I think I'm gonna give some stuff away to y'all, because you know, y'all been here. So, I'm gonna give some items away. Y'all know I like to give dicks away, I'm gonna try to clear some stuff out, so y'all gonna get a lot of the stuff that I wanna give away, some mugs, and some t-shirts, and stuff like that. So I'm gonna just go all out for y'all come the year, okay? For those who are here and been with me on Patreon for a year, we're gonna have our year party, okay? So y'all know I love to give away stuff. Yes, I'm still gonna do the meetup, I'm just gotta do a good date. And you already know, okay? So we just gotta come up with us a good date, okay? And we gonna work that out, sis, okay? So yes, we gonna still do a good meetup, we gonna still have our little like, um, you know, pop-up event, or whatever, I'm still planning on doing that, family. And now I got the time, so, you know, everything happens for a reason, family. And I'm just as happy, you know? I'm just as happy, you know, so, um, yeah. So never let people tell you that tower moments aren't moments that are meant to happen, because they are, okay? And it may be meant to happen for you for a reason, you know? Yeah. So, family, I'm gonna end it with that. I love you guys, through the darkness to the light, yes, meet up in person. Yeah, yeah. Yes, meet up in person, love. So I will be having something like that, where I'm gonna be doing a live reading, you know? And, um, you know, at all my events, I try to do like, um, a giveaway, or, um, you know, specials and sales. And family, I'm working on tomorrow, um, August, for my stores. And I'm debating on combining my stores again, family, so, I don't know how, because I can't control both, and I wanna go hard with one of them. So, I might be back to Healthy Exchange, or I might just all the way be all in the cards. I haven't decided yet, I don't know. Um, but that's something I have to decide, um, and I may have to decide on how to incorporate both. Um, so I'm working on that, okay? I'm working on that. But I do own and have trademarked Healthy Exchange, so Healthy Exchange is mine, family. I own the trademark, so anyone on both my stores, if they use that, then it's, they're in trouble, because they're mine. So, therefore, I need to figure out how to utilize them, okay? And that's something I'm working through. But in August is when I'm gonna have, um, like I said, the event, um, hopefully in August. I'm not, excuse me, switching to September, because I got so much stuff going on, okay? So I'll let you guys know, but I'll keep you, keep you posted on everything. Yes, the towers are redirected, yes they are, yes they are, sis. And it definitely is redirecting me, honey, I'm happy. Um, I'll get more information later, love you. Okay, okay, cool, cool, see you later, sis. Okay, yes, so, family, I'm gonna wrap it up too, but yes, family, I'm gonna be doing some things. I just, um, I'm getting ready to finish doing tomorrow, I'm not gonna do it tonight, because I'm tired, family. I've been up since eight o'clock doing readings all day long. And like I said, my last one was at five o'clock, and then I had shadow work sessions at six thirty, so your girl is tired, okay? Um, but, and I hope y'all, um, been catching some of the, um, victimized cases I put over there. I did the one that was by request for Tamsila Hartford, and I did, um, I, I posted the other one that was already over here for y'all, I put over there, um, about the postal work related. But, um, and tomorrow, I'm doing another one, but I don't know if I'm gonna post that on YouTube. It's probably gonna come to y'all first, it's gonna come to y'all first, okay? Um, and I got a celebrity coming over here too. So, I ain't gonna tell y'all who, because I just did Mary J Blige, so hopefully y'all went and watched that one. That was a good one. Um, that was only over here, which I know all, all of them just over here, the Michael Jordan, Dr. Dre, uh, Mary J Blige, um, so yeah, those are the newest ones, but yeah, I'm posting more for y'all. Um, what else I got for y'all? Oh, that was it, just, you know, everything, I just caught y'all up to everything that I wanted to tell you. I'm glad that I did that at the end of shadow work sessions. But you know, if you don't wanna see that, that's it, it's at the end, you can cut it off, all right? But anyways, family, before this camera slides me on out to the next location, I love you guys, through the darkness to the light, until the next time, family. It's our time, it's all in the cards. Make sure y'all hit the like button on these videos, and even on my channel, okay? I love you guys, peace. And do your shadow work, make sure you get that link, and do your shadow work, family, okay? I love you guys, peace.